Do I have audio as well?
I would have thought it was higher.
Yes.
The drop off is past second.
Not signed up when I rolled in. Peggy, it's here. It's not usually Bob.
Okay.
Guys.
What in the world?
It's 5:30, so a call to order this meeting for Monday, December 7th. Carl, would you start us off with a roll call, please?
Councilmember Remley?
Present.
Ronain?
Present.
Lunsman?
Present.
Rife?
Present.
Johnson?
Present.
Reinbold?
Present.
Langer?
Present.
Rux?
Present.
Mayor Shawman?
Present. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. First order of business will be to approve the agenda for this week's minutes, or meeting that, I guess, City Manager Joe has a slight modification.
Yes, no changes in the items, but for the engineering items, Stu Nelson, the Assistant City Engineer, will be giving those reports.
Thank you very much. Can we vote on that approval, Joe? Sounds good. I take a motion to approve that modification to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Reinbold. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer? Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the approval of the minutes for the meeting of November 23rd, 2020. Is included in your packets. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Lunsman and a second from Councilman Remley. If there's no changes or additions, then Carl, would you give me a roll call vote on that item?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer? Reinbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. No one signed up to speak for the open forum, so we'll move along to our consent calendar where we have two items for possible approval here today. Would someone like to make a motion on our consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman, about you, babe?
I did, yeah.
Councilman Lunsman. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer? Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. We'll move along to old business. We have the second reading of ordinance 201101 to rezone property described as lots 1 and 2, Block 16, original plat of Aberdeen, 6 South First Street from I-2 to District 2, C-3, R-4 districts. Possible approval of this second reading. Brett, any changes from last week?
Move to approve the rezon.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Remley. Does anyone have any questions for Brett? Carl, give me a roll call vote on that second reading, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer?
I have no idea what I'm voting on. Sorry, guys. I just got back.
Okay.
We're at 6:00 A. in the agenda. It's second reading of ordinance to rezone property, yada, yada.
I could just abstain. That's okay. I'll just abstain from this so you guys can...
You voted on it the first time. Does that make you feel any better?
Councilmember Reinbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye.
Yes, we received that.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the second reading of ordinance 201104, setting the salaries and wages of city officials and employees for the upcoming year. Possible approval of that second reading. Final adoption, Joe.
Yes, there's no changes from the first reading. And just to kind of recap, this is a non-step year for the non-union employees. And for the union employees, they have a slightly different step system that was updated, and all of those changes are included in this.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Johnson. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the second reading of ordinance 201105, supplementing the 2020 budget for various unanticipated projects, activities, and expenses related to COVID. We went through that list extensively two weeks ago. Carl, anything to add or change with that thing?
No changes since last reading, Mayor. However, I would point out that we will have a few COVID expenses that we will include in our December supplement, our final supplement of the year.
Sounds great.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronain and a second from Councilman Rux. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. We'll move along to new business. We will start with the consideration to approve a resolution to commit general funds for specific purposes. And here to talk about that is City Manager Joe.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As everyone will recall, back in June, the state of South Dakota made some possible allocations to local governmental entities from the Federal CARES Act. And it was really, there was a couple of ways you could get that reimbursement. The first was for unbudgeted COVID-related expenses, which is exactly what you just approved in the $220,000 supplement you just approved. And as Carl said, you'll see a few more of those reflecting what we do the rest of the year. And then the second way was for budgeted expenses in police, fire, and EMS personnel expenses. So with our potential allocation of $6.388 million, being able to recover 10 months' worth of salaries and benefits, we're able to get to that expenditure solely from the budgeted public safety expenses. So it's staff recommendation that rather than just take the funds that were in the 2020 budget and just push them away and use them later, to actually allocate those for some specific uses in the future. So really earmarking those for future allocation. So the resolution in front of you sets aside $1 million for potential COVID expenses in '21, in '20 and '21, $4 million for capital equipment expenses, and $1 million for public safety personnel expenses, and also sets aside a special projects allocation for future, yet undefined, capital or economic development incentives. And really what this does, some of those dollar amounts may seem really, really big, but we're able to take some things that are potentially purchased out of the general fund budget each year and potentially make budgeting annual, balancing an annual budget somewhat difficult. And we're earmarking that, creating a source for a number of years on some of these, and also making possible, perhaps, some things that we might not otherwise able to do, especially in that special projects, and maybe create some added benefit later on. So that's the staff recommendation that this resolution be approved.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Reinbold and a second from Councilman Johnson. Does anyone have any questions? Statements, comments? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote to approve that resolution then, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got COVID marketing strategies update. Joe, can you tell us about the progress in our COVID marketing strategies?
Yes, at the last meeting, you authorized me to move forward with increasing our marketing strategies for COVID preventative measures. So I just wanted to update you on that a little bit. And first of all, I am not a marketing genius by any means, but the folks down at the Chamber are, and they really helped me out on this one. So I owe them a lot. They've really taken the ball for us on this one. So one, there were a couple of radio spots with some council members. They've also made a couple of spots with each of the hospital administrators, really kind of that healthcare plea of, we need your help, really so the public could hear that from them. So we now have four radio spots going. $5,000 was allocated for that. One of the discussion points came up was to purchase some sanitation stations, which is really a mounted stand to put a dispenser on for hand sanitizer. They can be put in businesses. As you came in tonight, you noticed there's a dozen of them sitting in the hallway. We just got them Friday and got them put together. The Chamber's going to help us distribute those to the businesses that need and want them. That was about $1,500 spent locally. They're made by Wooden Mallet. They're very attractive looking for those that have seen them. Also, we've made a graphic. Troy McQuillan, of course, volunteered some services, and he's just got a bright red graphic on there that, just a little bit about masking. And it also gives you a Q code to the CDC recommendations, so we appreciate that help. We're going to use that graphic a little bit more places, but that's the first place we put it, is on those stands. So we do kind of have that marked. We purchased 40 boxes of 50 gloves. That accounts for about $150 worth of gloves. They're very affordable. The Chamber's going to distribute those to their businesses. So again, making masks available to businesses and individuals. And then also working on our social media presence. Those three things were the first things. And then the social media, putting that graphic out and doing a little bit more social media. That's kind of the next step. It's actually just kind of getting fired up. Also, the Chamber had been working a little bit, and they're creating these little chamber sanitation kits. And they have these little nice face mask with their logo on it, and also some hand sanitizer that you can tidy and carry with you anywhere. They brought us over some samples so that if you want one, you can take one home tonight. They would encourage you to do so. I have them here with me. I can give to you before you leave. But again, a lot of folks getting together, helping us on this, and I think we've done pretty good in a short amount of time. We'll keep monitoring it. Few as individuals here, things, reach out to me, and we'll see if we need to step this up in the future, what the next steps might be.
Any questions for Joe?
We don't know. Excuse me.
Go ahead, Mark.
How do we know if this is working? Of course, we probably haven't been doing it for very long, so we don't know if any businesses have stepped up their masking for their people yet.
I will tell you, the Chamber, before we kind of added to this, has been doing some signage. I see that a lot of places. The mask and the sanitation stations will be going out this week, so that's, we haven't had an opportunity. I guess the biggest thing, I have heard the radio ads. I have heard that. But if any of you have heard input, positive or negative, we were still getting quite a little bit of it. It slowed down in the last week or so since this has started. I don't know that that means anything, but we were still hearing from a lot of folks on both sides of the issue, but we're not hearing as much. So if you have any thoughts or comments to add on that, we'd appreciate hearing it.
Thank you very much. We will move along then, hearing nothing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Langer, have you got something for us?
Couldn't get my unmute button to go. Weird. Yeah, if I could just say a few words on this. You know, I have heard a lot on this. So I would be surprised if my colleagues have not heard a lot as well, unless, you know, they're not engaging with people on it. In the last two weeks from our last council meeting, I worked with the Chamber on the plan to help get businesses, get masks and sanitizer. I've worked with several media outlets and marketing reps to help understand how we, as a city, can better get this message out. I talked to several frontline workers. I've talked to doctors. I also talked to several mental care providers in the area that deal with hospitals and domestic abuse people, domestic abuse survivors, I'm sorry. I've talked to several business owners. And today, I actually sat on a conference call from Operation Warp Speed. We all got that email to learn about the process of the vaccine distribution. On that call, they definitely talked about wearing masks. They stressed the importance of washing our hands and social distancing. So I just want to make sure that I'm acknowledging, again, what our resolution states, that we're asking people to wear masks. And I ask that if people aren't engaging with us, that we don't stop engaging with them because they're not messaging us anymore. The only reason they're not messaging us right now, and the only reason that they're not talking to us right now about this, is because we don't have anything on the agenda specifically in regards to it. When we talk about a mandate or we talk about a resolution, it gets people talking, which is probably why people aren't watching as much right now. But I just want to make sure that we acknowledge the fact that as of today, we have 30 deaths in Brown County, 1,110 deaths in the state of South Dakota due to COVID. I'm not saying that other deaths don't matter, or that they aren't important. What I'm saying is that we have the ability as humans to help slow the spread and prevent these deaths possibly by wearing masks. Want to acknowledge the health care providers again, and I just want to make sure that as a council, that, you know, City Manager, Guy, I appreciate all the work you're doing on these marketing campaigns, but we, as a council, as the leaders of this community, have a job to do to continue that. I'm explaining what I'm doing, and I hope that all of you are doing your part as well. And, you know, I just want to make sure that we don't have this conversation go away, because people aren't calling and yelling at us, one way or the other. That's it. Thank you.
I have heard from people. One of them was my sister, who was a nun at the presentation. Her and Sister Gabriella Crowley. Now, they usually send letters to the editor, and she called me after our meeting last time. And she said that, if I write a letter, do you think it'll be effective? And I said, probably not, but you write a letter and get it in the paper, and then I will be a voice for you at City Council. So this is a good time for me to read that. I read in the paper this morning that City Council failed to pass a mask mandate for the city of Aberdeen. I am extremely disappointed in this decision. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned in today's article that one of the reasons for not having a mask mandate, it would overwhelm the two code officers. Possibly it could. However, what about the already overwhelmed doctors and nurses in our hospitals? They are exhausted and stressed because of the filling up with the beds. Too many people are dying. Wearing of the masks could lower that incredibly. Many people are suffering needlessly because we, as a state and nation, are thinking only of one's freedom. Seems to me, we would be freer if we had less people dying of this horrible virus. Let us be more considerate of those suffering, please. If our solution is more marketing, I find that a bit weak. It is all over the media about the necessity of wearing a mask. For the love of your fellow Aberdeenans, family, and others, please reconsider this decision as soon as possible. I am really frightened for our state and nation. One more letter they sent to the governor today. Dear Governor Noem, we are writing once again to you about encouraging to support your people of South Dakota. Your constituents of South Dakota are suffering needlessly under the COVID virus. The newspaper has two pages of obituaries in a number of days. There has not been that many in one day's paper as long as we can remember. As of 12/3/2020, 1,033 people that we know have died in the state of South Dakota, and it's climbing. On other occasions, when the state had a disaster such as a tornado or severe blizzard damage, you have come forth with emergency aid. We ask you to do the same for the COVID pandemic. This is worse than any other that has happened in our state. Doesn't cost much money, just a small sacrifice for others, if not for yourself, to wear a mask. I'm asking you to be a model for your state and encourage people to wear a mask by issuing a mandate. It can and will save lives. If you do it for them, more will follow. It would be great to see you wear a mask and show us how it's done and show compassion for the dying. Our doctors, nurses, and all medical staff of the hospitals are suffering from extreme exhaustion and getting sick themselves. The hospitals also have a fear of going into bankruptcy. I pray that you will never get the virus, but if you do, there will be health care personnel with you. Even if they are exhausted, they will help you through it, no matter how tired they are. Please help us out and show us by modeling of the wearing of a mask. Thanks for helping us out. Sincerely, Sister Myra Remley, Sister Gabriella Crowley.
Thank you for sharing, Mark. I would like to point out that on a positive note, the seven-day average for the new cases in Brown County has literally been cut in half since our last meeting. So that's the leading indicator. Obviously, we're aware of the lagging indicators, and we're waiting for this thing to continue to see the full results, but we're definitely moving in the right direction at this point. Next, we'll have a hearing on new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for Catherine Infante, doing business as The Corner Pocket Cafe, 202 North Main Street. Possible approval of that retail on-off sale malt beverage license. Can I get a motion for that, please?
Move to approve. Second.
A motion from Councilman Rife and a second from Councilman Reinbold. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer? Reinbold?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, guys.
Thank you. Johnson?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the hearing on a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license and new retail on-off sale wine and cider license for MP Aberdeen LLC, doing business as My Place Hotel at 410 South Harvard Street. Possible approval of that. Those particular licenses, can I get a motion, please?
Moved. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Lunsman and a second from Councilman Rux. Carl, would you give me, oh, is that not you?
No.
His mask is throwing his voice to the other side of the room entirely. Second to Councilman Remley. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the Northeast Council of Governments, NICO, joint cooperative agreement for the upcoming year. Possible approval and authorization to sign that joint cooperative agreement for the upcoming year with NICOG, the city of Aberdeen. Carl, is that something that you'll tell us about, or Eric?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Very briefly, we do this annually, this agreement with Northeast Council of Government. They help us with several grant applications and the process of receiving the grant funds and then closing out the grant.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion?
Second.
Councilman Johnson, a second from Councilman Rife. Does anyone have any questions about this payment or the agreements or any other component to this? Oh, then Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Abstain.
Langer?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got amendment number one to the South Dakota Department of Transportation Agreement 811878, with Aberdeen Ride Line extending the length of time to obtain reimbursements for expenses under the CARES Act 5311 until December 31st, 2021. So this would be the approval to authorize the City Manager to sign that amendment. Tom, what can you tell us about that?
Just what it says there, just basically gives us an extension on how long we can continue to draw our money for the CARES Act. As of the end of September, we still had $188,608 remaining that we can draw down on, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronain and a second from Councilman Rux. Any questions for Mr. Wanty on this? Carl, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the contract for professional services with Banner and Associates for the water reclamation facility plan, water and wastewater rate study, and the new industrial park collection system conveyance study. Possible approval and authorization for the City Manager to sign that contract. Peggy, you're here to tell us about that.
This is kind of the beginning of our plant expansion. We've been waiting for a very long time to get information from the Department of Environment and Natural Resources in order to move forward with this. And we have gotten the necessary information as far as any new pollutant limits we would have on our discharge, anything like that. This is necessary for, to be able to handle, you know, to upsize the plant to handle future industrial growth, things like that, because where we're at right now, we're pretty much at max capacity. So we get a lot of bang for our buck with this study. It's Banner and Associates. They've done a lot of work, especially at the wastewater plant. They're the only engineering firm that has had, done any of the engineering, so they know all the background and stuff. And what this facility plan includes is, the total contract cost is $169,000. It includes the facility plan. It also includes water and wastewater rate studies, and a study to look at the conveyance of sewage from the new industrial park where AGP is at, all the way out to the wastewater plant.
Move to approve this contract.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Rux. Peggy, you've worked with Banner and Associates, then it sounds like, and projects have been good.
Yeah, yeah. And they gave us, you know, a very good price on the facilities plan, and then the other additional measures that are included in that. So it's a lot of bang for the buck.
For the public information, when is this supposed to be done?
This will be done 2021. The facilities plan will be finished, and then we'll go incrementally through the plant, what we need to upgrade, what needs to be replaced. This will be the fourth, I believe, facilities plan that Banner has done for the city.
Any other questions? Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Thank you for joining us tonight, Peggy. Next, we've got the joint funding agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey for the Water Resource Investigation. Possible approval of that agreement, and that's what Stu is here to tell us about. Stu, what have you got for us?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The title for this is somewhat misleading. This really is primarily funding for the stream gauging stations that we use along the Elm River and Foot Creek and Moxon Creek to monitor stream levels as we might be experiencing flooding. We have used these gauging stations extensively in the past, as recently as 2019, when we had high water. It really helps to give us a picture of where water levels are in our watersheds, so we can better prepare for flooding and do the planning that's required for that.
Move approval. Second.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Johnson. Ronain, your audio makes you just a little bit behind each time. Ronain, your audio makes you just a little bit behind each time. Carl?
I'll be faster.
Has, I'm going to preemptively give the next second to Councilman Ronain. Has anyone got any questions for Stu while he's here? All right. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnen.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the recommendation on bids for the 2021 water treatment chemicals, carbon, possible approval to award chemical bids for activated carbon to Atlas Carbon LLC and Donau Carbon US LLC as recommended by the Water Treatment Department. Bob Braun is here to tell us about that.
We had nine chemical bids for carbon this year. So we sent them all off to the lab to be analyzed, which gives us the best reduction in taste in order of causing particles. And these two are the ones that meet the criteria we had. So, and it's actually considerably cheaper than last year, so we're fortunate for that.
Move to approve.
Second.
That, I don't know how legal it is to give this one to Councilman Ronain after all that. I've got a motion from Councilman Reinbold. I'm going to give that second to Councilman Ronain since he's been chipped off twice. We'll get you next time, Remley. Any questions for Bob about these bids? All right. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnen.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the change order payment for the 2020 old building roof replacement project at the water treatment facility. Possible approval of that change order number one in the amount of $3,146 and the final payment in the amount of $50,496 to Hub City Roofing. Bob, you're still here. Tell us about the roofing project. How did that go?
They replaced a section of the roof over the filter gallery and our clear well pumps. In doing that, there was an area that had substantial wetness. There's also the 1934 addition that we repaired had not as much insulation as they originally planned. That's why we had to add considerably more to make it up to par with the rest of the building.
Councilman Remley, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a.
Thanks for being fair.
All right, spread the love out here. Ronain keeps piping up back there and his computer's at fault. I've got a motion from Councilman Remley and a second from Councilman Rux. Does anyone have any questions about that, the roofing project we finished? All right, go ahead. Carl, with a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnen.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the payment requests for the airport projects. We've got payment number eight for the taxiway C to REED construction for $148,546.72. We've got payment 28 for the master layout plan to Helms and Associates for the amount of $14,288.33. We've got payment number 26 to taxiway C to Helms and Associates for $78.99.81. Payment number one for miscellaneous airport services to Helms and Associates for $1,052.50. Payment number five, the snow removal equipment to Helms and Associates for $470. And Rich, I see you on the screen here. What can you tell us about those payments?
Okay, good evening. Payment, or line item one, payment number eight is for REED construction. That's materials used and billed to date. Our taxiway project actually is completed, but we're still getting the bills wrapped up. And that's what this one's for. Line item two, payment number 28 for the master plan. We're about 99% completed with our master plan, airport layout plan project. We had a conference call this afternoon with the ADO up in Bismarck. They're reviewing it right now and we do need to make just some word changes and need to add some information about COVID with regard to enplanements and deplanements. The enplanement, deplanement data that was placed in the master plan was all data that was current up until 2019. So we have to add our current anomaly or account for our current anomaly, COVID with a reduction in passenger numbers. Line item three, taxiway C. Oh, this is engineering and administration costs with regard to taxiway C. Line item four, payment number one. There's just some miscellaneous stuff. A couple, a few weeks ago at council, I brought forth a list of service or charges for miscellaneous services. So that's what this falls under. You'll notice that there's four line items on there. The site visit to Willow Creek, that was for the wetland mitigation project we did and finished up in 2015. We had a meeting on that today also. And we've got to get some more data up to the ADO on that and we should be good to sign that off here in the next couple of months. And the snow removal map is because we had to update our snow and ice control plan. Since the end of the project, the actual physical layout of the airport has changed. So we needed to get that map updated and get that put into our airport certification manual. Wetland mitigation, that was the report and report review. And let's see, the last one, line item five, payment number five. This was for some assistance that we received from Helms putting together the information for the snow removal equipment, AIP number 44.
Thank you, Rich.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion from Councilman Ronain and a second from Councilman Reif. Rich, was that the total payment for that snow removal equipment service? Or was there a different payment at a different time?
There was another payment earlier on that.
And then what?
I think it was about $2,000.
Yeah, at one point that we were looking at maybe spending upwards of $25,000 on finding that snow removal equipment, if memory serves.
Oh, correct.
The percent covered by federal grant funds of that taxiway C project, was that a 90% deal?
That one is 90%, correct. 90%, 5%, city, 5% state.
Thank you very much. Any other thoughts or questions on this one? Otherwise, Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnen.
Aye, motion does carry. Thank you for joining us tonight, Mr. Crookle. Next, we've got the review and approval of the claims and payroll. We've got a bill list included in this packet and then we've also got the payroll, which is for the pay period, November 22 through December 5, 2020, and for that city's share of social security, old age, virus insurance, retirement, health and insurance. Can I get a motion to make both of those payments?
Move approval.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Remley and a second from Councilman Rux. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Abstained.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnen.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the city manager's report. Joe, what have you got?
Just a couple of things. It's the time of year where we're doing annual evaluations on all the employees. So again, supervisor, do them on all of our line employees. I do all the department heads. And then it's up to the council, to myself, the city attorney and the finance director. So just as a reminder, if you haven't turned your forms in to the mayor yet, please try and do that by Wednesday so he can compile them and get them back to us. Also, we are fully in the new council meeting schedule.